Chief's the chair.
She is the chair.
She is the chair.
It's a good, nice chair.
True leader, gives the wealth to the to the leaders.
Ready for school?
Yeah, I guess so. That's, I'm, I'm sure it's not, because Al was friends all the time.
Yeah, well, my daughter, she started today because she goes to, uh, Botech for her nursing program. But I guess the regular school starts tomorrow, so, or maybe it's next week, tomorrow.
No.
Except for part of Gettysburg, because I guess they're working on some facilities.
Right, yeah, well, I don't think we start until next week.
The year is very nice, we're studying that school. You have any scared there that have been chased down by a song?
Well, everybody starts differently, so, like, I think Fairfield starts tomorrow. Right, so I have a guy in my office, makes kids go Fairfield, I don't want to go to Littlestown, I don't even go to Gettysburg, like, every time we talk, it's a lot, someone has a different day than their own school. And then because of my daughters and, like you said, over at, uh, Botech, um, she started today. And then her class is like twelve to two or something like that. So, uh, she's not too happy about having to show up for two hours or an hour and a half or whatever.
My s- daughter had to go back to Cal and go to, because she's doing a period counseling job in campus.
Oh, okay.
So she had to go back on Saturday. Her class is not structured last week, so. You want the short summer look, right?
Yeah, yeah, I guess it's a happy song, you know.
We're supposed to have somebody recording now, sorry.
Didn't you hear?
No.
Is my agenda on the back from Angela?
Oh. I think it's one more.
Okay, at seven thirty, I've called the meeting to order. As usual, the meeting is made to order in five streams. Um, as Bar Cooper is not here, Secretary Teney and I will do the role. Judy Hogan and here is Chair, Richard Kep.
Here.
Luther?
Here.
And Horst is here, we welcome you back from your kind of leg, missed you. And Don. Don.
You said you should.
And Bar Cooper is absent. Um, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the July sixteenth meeting?
Yes, I did.
Any comments of corrections or additions?
I don't know.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'm going to approve.
A second?
Just a second.
Okay, all in five, um?
All right.
For Chair comments, I have, um, I don't really have much to report this week, but this month, but Bar, as we knew last month, is not going to be here. And, um, they talked, the supervisors talked about various options, and what they decided was that someone in the office, I don't know who, will do the minutes from recording. Okay, so. The only other word I have is that the, um, supervisors accepted our comments about town. And then we had a, we thought additional, so that's, that's completed now. And Rich, who kindly agreed to be our representative to the county, uh, reviewing the comprehensive plan, do you have a word on that?
Yep, basically, they just got together to kind of brainstorm where to go. Um, so, background, apparently, our Freedom Council requested an update. Because they use that to support grant applications and that. And, and besides, it was at least ten years old, it was due.
Yeah, it was twenty-five.
I think, yep, and the only people there was myself, Liberty, the, uh, Freedom, and Carol Valley.
Oh.
And that was it.
That's it.
And the money from Carol Valley had gone to the person from Fairfield. The general consensus was they didn't want to do a full blown overhaul in the apartment, but rather do a targeted update. Exactly what that would look like, it was decided that the county specifically, or, would put together kind of a scope work of what that might look like. And send that out to the, to the municipal counties or cover that bit. And they expect that maybe by the end of September, we'll get a letter from them outlining that. And they would also do a cost evaluation. It may not cost the municipal anything, for maybe a couple thousand dollars, but until they get the scope, I don't know if they'll know that, so.
Did no other financial concerns land?
Apparently not. And they apparently didn't call, but their, their planning office, they, I can't, is it Cherry, for how it will roll in? Shale, Shale, yeah. She, she was online, and then the deputy was there, and Rob, and the two young ladies that were.
Those are the elders.
Yeah, they were all the rappers. So, but anyway, it's not mine, it's, at this point, we don't have anything to do until we get some from the county. And then that should precipitate a follow-up discussion of, do we do anything, or, you know, exactly what.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, okay, is there anyone here who's not on the agenda who'd like to make a public comment? Okay, the old business on the agenda tonight is to acknowledge receipt of the updated Land of Honor grant for Jesus Mary Joseph, um, monastery. This is a combined project, uh, that involves both Liberty Township and, um, Hamilton again. Um, this is a new submission dated August fifth of twenty-four. So, um, there are things online to look at, but I believe we should just, you know, move to recommend that we set the date starting today to accept this plan, revised plan, which sets a clock. So I move that we accept and acknowledge receipt of this plan coming up.
Oh, fine.
Jesus Mary Joseph monastery. Okay.
You have a vote on it, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, anybody have any discussion or comments about it, or, I mean, we've had this for a number of years, this, this plan, many years, actually, and so on. Is this something new, and most of the building, well, all of the building was supposed to be handled again. So we really didn't have a lot to do with it, but then they, they changed in their plan, so that will probably be on the agenda for September. Okay, so all in favor?
Right.
Uh?
Um, you guys should also, and it might be overkill, it may not be needed, um, you should also make a motion that you will deny the plan unless they submit a, a time extension, then you believe that they should, uh, grant the time extension. There's, there is a little.
I thought we granted the time, so.
It's did, but just the way the timing all works out, um, if this isn't deemed a major change, and this is just deemed a revision, the clock's going to run out.
Oh, okay.
If this is deemed a major change and we restart the clock, that's what we just did here, was approve that we accepted the plan. But just for, just to be on the safe side, we should make a recommendation to deny the plan unless they submit a time extension, then grant the time extension.
So we can't accept the plan tomorrow?
Well, no, we did. Again, this is just a little bit of overkill.
Okay.
Depending on how the plan was viewed, if it's a new one or a re-submit. So we accept it as a new plan, which is completely fine, but if it's deemed a revision, then we have to either deny it or grant a time extension. They didn't submit a time extension, so we should just deny it. We'll put the clause on there that if they submit a time extension, um, we should grant the time extension.
I'll make that note, Rich.
What he said, whoever's listening.
Okay, I said that whole, we, we should, um, notify.
You should make the recommendation to deny the plan unless the time extension has been submitted.
Okay, so I move that we have, make a recommendation that we will deny the plan unless they've requested a time extension.
No, that is.
I thought we just acknowledged the receipt of it.
Well, that's, that's what's, because on the, so, what I'm saying is that they've, they've actually got two plans that go like this.
They submitted, well, they submitted a plan, and then they sent this in as a revised plan. Hamilton man township, and I agree with Hamilton ban, we think it's a major change, meaning it starts to flop going. But no lawyers or anybody has gotten involved to say they deem it one way or another. Uh, I, I think maybe Hamilton banned it, but I know Hamilton ban is there meeting tonight, so I don't know what they really said. Um, and we just want to be more safe than sorry. This may be for all, for none, but we just want to make sure it's all on record that if it's not deemed a, a major change, and it's just deemed a revised plan, then we need to deny it because the time will run out. That's, that's.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? You all in favor?
Who's second there? Okay.
Okay, the next, the next item on the agenda is the Raven Rock. So then, adult plan.
Due to the nature of the plan itself, or maybe the people involved, being Raven Rock, a military base, we did submit a, a letter to the township, um, and you could probably, if you wanted to, because we should watch what we say about this plan, um, you could just make a motion and you, because I think you all seen my letter, you should make a motion that you concur with API's letter and forward access to the plan. If you haven't seen my letter, I'll pass it around.
But basically, what we're saying in your letter is.
Watch what you say because of the nature of this.
We're referring to Hamilton ban.
Yeah, I see that, but then in the, the county comments, it says Hamilton ban is refused to even, uh, review.
I, you, because of, because of this, because it's a military base, we really have to watch what we say. I mean, I, I know what you're saying, if we talk about it, we should go into executive session, um.
Well, I'm not calling that.
I, I know, I know.
There we do, you can look at it.
Well, because of military base, they do have the right to, to, to request, say, that they're federal government, they don't have to follow regulations. Um, all the building that is being proposed is all in Hamilton man township. There's some minor grading in Liberty Township, but it's really nothing in Liberty Township that's concurred.
Is everybody home, and I know you haven't been, you've been out sick for some meetings, we can, we can just.
Are, are this.
We got comments on that, too.
No.
Yeah.
So if we recommend anything, we should concur with both county and county.
I, I, I wouldn't talk about county, that's, they're recommending board, and they're not, they're just viewing it as what it is, and not that it's a military base person. So, um.
Maybe you can have Rich.
I mean, that's, that was a letter from Hamilton, at this time.
But it's, Hamilton, Hamilton ban township, if they refuse me to review of which privacy. Now, if that's, are they concerned about the military privacy, or they think their people can't handle it?
Uh.
That, uh.
Probably because it's military base.
Well, the military submitted the plan for review, they should be viewed on. Aren't they obligated to, to their township?
Well, it's their township, they can do it if they want to.
Okay, so I will move that the planning commission, uh, recommends that the supervisor follow the comments submitted by KPI and the letter from Hamilton and, regarding the decision. And that we should take no further action at this time.
They're following the comments, they're following. I know they're live, but they should look at.
And say, consider, they should follow what duty said, plus consider at its county comments.
Okay. Done?
I would ask if anybody else wanted to.
Okay, thanks, first. Okay, any further discussion, questions? All in favor? The next item on the agenda is Liberty Estates Switchpoint, I'll do it, from corner, dated five twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four. Is there someone here to discuss this plan? Could you please go to your name?
Hey, and Chair Michael Wiley with Liberty Development Company, obviously, they're a residential property.
Mike, just so you're aware, you, you've walked in late, um, our secretary's not here, not doing minutes, it's being recorded and livestreamed. We'll get the minutes off the recording tomorrow, so if you can, I don't, I'm hopefully to get here, I'm not saying you're sneaking soft, but just, yeah.
It's, all right, here. Okay, you are the engineer.
I'm, uh, in charge of the development approvals for the company. Uh, we have engaged Century Engineering to prepare an amendment to the five-three-seven plan that the town adopted around two thousand and eight. Uh, we're still planning on developing, uh, Liberty Estates, Liberty, um, development property for the five hundred sixty-nine uh, lots, one of the lots, actually, right across the street from Penn Mall here will be given to the township, if there's any facility of expansion. The primary reason for submitting the amendment, when the two thousand eight plan was, uh, presented and adopted, there were two other developments that we were going to joint venture with in developing this wastewater treatment plant, that is Steelman Marker and, you know, the government states, and we had a joint development agreement drafted, it was part of a, through the five-three-seven plan, but those developments have gone belly up, and so our project will be the sole, um, designer, financier, constructor of this wastewater treatment plant, and we're also going to have an associated, uh, well water supply, treatment, storage and distribution system, and this will support all the Liberty Estates and Liberty Development projects. The other thing that was in the five-three-seven plan, uh, was a general location of where the wastewater plant could have been placed, anywhere from, uh, a point about quarter of a mile south east of our southernmost property, on the, the Sun Track Road down into the Steelman Marker property, and further up on a property on Flat Run. And, uh, back when Don's brother Gil was also involved in the project, they said, at some point, once we know where the plant will be finally decided, we need to go back and amend the plan. And so because the two developments will no longer be joint venture partners in developing this plant, because we know where the wastewater plant's going to be, it's going to be on our property, and we actually have, uh, initial feedback from Pennsylvania D P P about the, uh, characteristics of what the plan has to treat. We now, uh, have engaged Century to begin the technical design. We can't file any name with the township or with D P P until this plan amendment occurs, and so we've asked them to file an amendment to the plan that shows how and where we're going to provide the wastewater treatment for the five hundred sixty-nine units, what the ultimate flow would be. We also are going to, to, to file engineering plans for the first phase of development, which will be about seventy lots. And so, uh, this facility, although it will be housed inside a building, we're going to phase the actual construction of the plant modules. And so this first step for this, uh, approval and adoption of the plan amendment has to happen before we can file a technical, uh, submissions for the water and wastewater plants with D P P. Matter of fact, after, and assuming the town would support and endorse it, it actually has to go through D P P review as well. Um, so after the plan passes muster, uh, with the township and it gets adopted, presumably, we then have to get it reviewed and adopted by D P P to allow us to submit a technical plan for the wastewater plant. So basically, we're asking for an amendment to approve plan, to re- refine the location of the plant, and to acknowledge that the other two developments will no longer be part of this joint development agreement, because their approvals expired. I haven't heard anything about their property being developed. Any questions for me?
I, I assume you've got our letter from our.
Yes.
Um, I mean, it's, just to keep it short and sweet, we, we don't think it's a completed package. Our recommendation to the board would have been, it's not a completed package, I don't know if you want to update it or not, but we don't, uh, we don't think the townships should forward on to D P at this stage.
I understand.
You, you've been around enough, you know what your options are. Uh, if you, if you want to hold off and say, well, we need a new completed package, that's fine.
Yes, we're in the process of addressing those comments, Don, and we're also addressing Adams County plan, and Rob Thaler gave us comments as well, which are mysteriously similar to the planning comments he gave us, you know, eight years ago. But, yeah, we will submit a revision to this, so you all can provide, uh, you know, fewer, if any, comments, and you could be in a position to get the planning commission's endorsement, and I'm, I'm not sure if the supervisor kept adopting this, he will.
Uh, I mean, ultimately, it'll at least approve. As you know, we have to fill out section four A.
Right.
And the planning commission will do that. Uh, again, if, if the planning commission decided not to take our recommendation, we gave them in the letter, we gave what we thought our answers should be. Um, so ultimately, uh, we get another package, we'll readdress numbers one through sixteen, now you can come in four A. They'll fill it out based on our recommendation, or however they want to, and then they'll go to the board, and they'll forward on to this, uh, D.
Yeah, that's fine, so if, if the process is stable, and the action is until you endorse the right package, that's fine, plus, we just want to, Don, I'll be honest, cross all the D's and make sure you're happy with the comments of it, because obviously, it's the first step, and it's going forward, and we can't get it without the township adopting the plan amendment.
And I think you mentioned about the two, um, subdivisions, the Steelman Marker, and any others, the Ali Mahaj, I think? I think it was Ali.
I think it was that one, it's pretty.
Yeah, but, okay, that's.
Right.
I have one question, I haven't been here lately, Liberty Estates, is that a subdivision, or?
So the, the property that we assembled, seven hundred acres, one section of it is called Liberty Estates, because they have larger lots, and the township actually approved the preliminary plan for that, about five acres of here. Those are seventy lots, about two acre in size, the remaining four hundred, um, ninety-nine lots are Liberty, we call them Liberty Valley. But it's all part of the same development that we've certified by this wastewater plant.
Sounds quite ambitious.
Well, frankly, it's far less ambitious than the first time my company came in and proposing about a fourteen hundred unit plan, which we scaled back considerably, uh, because of an outcry, and I won't go into a, a huge detail, but if there was a protracted legal, uh, discussion, we ended up having to obtain a court order, so I'm going to grab up the Court of Common Pleas, between us, the township supervisors at the time, and several adjoining property owners, legally called intervenors, so property scaled back, and the benefit to the township, you know, for good or bad, was far fewer units, but we're also, uh, going to create about sixty percent of the property will remain in open space, which is very unusual on a plan of seven three size, so.
This, this started over twenty years ago.
Yeah, I think the first set of plans that drew the ire of residents was around two thousand two, two thousand three.
Something like that.
I started with the company in two thousand five, and I've been working on it practically twenty years myself, but it started a few years before that, and, uh, so we have a roadmap forward, uh, this is just sort of the middle step. We do have a concept plan that was approved, uh, by the planning commission and then amended by committee per the settlement agreement. We have the engineering approval for the first seventy lots, we just need to get the facilities approved now before we can get the rest of the approvals, and development's going to happen over probably a fifteen year horizon, we're not just going to sprout them all up overnight. Uh, but there definitely is interest, uh, in moving into this market, because our supply, for our county, frankly. because our supply in Frederick County frankly is drying up and this is just the natural progression. Come up here and focus on this.
So what, what, probably received it again?
Yes, sir. Yes, I was actually coming up here quite regularly until a couple of the downturns in the economy, during the great recession. Frankly, we had to slow the pace of getting approvals because there really wasn't any demand for it at the time. But there was huge metal demand now, and so we'll be seeing more freedom. I'll be bringing some more of my team to, to help me backfill some of the details as I get into the final engineering control.
How do you guarantee the upkeep of the wastewater plant?
Mike?
How do you guarantee the upkeep of the wastewater plant?
Well, the settlement agreement requires the developer to own and operate it or have a certified entity to own and operate it. It will be funded initially capitalized by the developer and then funded through dues paid by the system users, meaning the residents. And so very likely, eventually, it's probably managed, if not sold, to a private entity like Maryland Environmental Service operates the system all the time. We'll have to fund initial construction and some reserve until the project will have enough funding from the residents. But it's gonna be no cost for township. They don't have any obligation to ever own, maintain or fund any of it, much like the rest of the infrastructure.
They would have a responsibility if you guys were part of it?
Not under the settlement agreement. We have to put enough money in reserves to make sure it operates perpetually. Which is why we're frankly building it in small pieces. We're not gonna build it to the full capacity. We don't let the development process dictate the expansion of it. But obviously, the infrastructure we put in, some of it under our nickel at the outset. And so from that point on, it'll just be the operation maintenance cost that will be legally required and we'll be funded. And I'm sure the D E P is going to, in the review of the technical, will make sure, they look at the financial analysis to make sure there's enough reserve funds for it to operate without any burden from the other outside entity.
Okay, so I moved to table this application until it has been revised to the consideration of the county. And K P I's. It's a lot of papers.
Yes, it really is.
It's a lot of pages.
Wait till you see the engineering drawings and calculations. K P I definitely earned their keep when they reviewed that last set. I think there's four big books this wide. So there's a lot, there's a lot of involvement and frankly, a lot of that really is the fact that Pennsylvania's process, in my opinion, is a lot more complicated than I'm used to. But, you know, they're also very thorough, I would say, and that's why we present a lot of paper that they ask for.
At some point, I guess, we'd get better plans of land, so I'd know the figure.
There are some small scale plans, the entire plan development and the initial phasing. And we'll make sure this comes back in. Uh, that's probably from one of the historical searches with the state. We do have other plans, like, you know.
That's a, that's a thingy. That's, that's saying if there's any dangers to that.
This is, this is just one of the insertions, the overall plan for the development.
We have that at a small scale.
Right. And so the final plans will be at a larger scale, we'll see enlarges. Basically, the wastewater plant, the water treatment plant's down here in the southeast corner. And these three land bays will be the initial development and then we'll string out further. This was the section that was Liberty Estates, the seventy lots, that the township has already approved with final engineering on it. But none of these lots have been recorded.
Can I believe that?
You cannot. You motion and Rich second.
Do you like the copy of the table?
I have small ones and kill it.
I can leave this one.
I have to leave it. Make sure one of you has one, three of us on the large scale.
Okay.
What did you say with your tone?
No, I just asked a bit of the table.
Great, great. Judy made motion to table and Rich seconded that motion and sorted it out.
Okay, so no further discussion on the favor?
Oh.
Okay. Against? Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. See you all the, whatever week this weekend, hopefully it'll get you started some later in the next.
We are the third Tuesday of the month at seven thirty.
Yeah, so that'll be before September.
And it has to be ten days ahead of the meeting?
I'm sure it, yeah, it'll probably end up being like, you know, yeah, so much they've already done, it's a surprise.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
You too.
Good night. Night, night. Okay, the last item on the agenda is the renovating slash final plan for the subdivision lot division, the property of Dustin and Ashley Alexander and the Kellit property. The Alexander property is twenty-five D one six dash zero 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 five A dash zero zero zero. And the Kellit property is twenty-five A O, that's a zero. It's gonna be a zero. Okay, dash zero one one three dash zero zero zero. This plan was dated by twenty twenty-four. And you all came in, this is the comment?
Yes.
You were the tenor?
Yes.
You came in with a sketch plan?
Yes, we did.
I did originally, yeah.
You came in with the original sketch plan. You weren't up here, I think.
I was there, yeah.
Okay, so this is my's plan, which we accepted and I'll next to you. And, um. Okay, your day.
Yeah.
Okay, Don, do you want to go from the end again first?
For the most part, there's a handful of some house cleaning items, let's just call it, that. There's really nothing major overall with the plan. Again, just a lot of little, small house cleaning items. The only, which this is a major issue, the only issue is they wanna create two lots right now. I think it's five and six and add five on to Kellit, to Mr. Kellit's property. And then eventually at some time add on lot six. I'm gonna assume this is because of clean and green purposes. Historically, this township does not allow that. We'll have to submit this plan, which is five, and then later on lot six. However, this board won't make that decision. That decision will be made by supervisors. And that was my final comment on the letter, which I believe is number fifteen. The issue is that it'll be a landlot piece of land and there won't be zoning requirements. So again, historically, this township has not granted that. Like you do two separate plans every, well, one plan this year, one plan next year. Other than that, though, it's really pretty simple. It's just house cleaning items. If, if the board doesn't grant them, get this way and then make them do one lot at a time, they'll probably have to reconfigure that lot just a little bit, probably not much, maybe not at all. Just make sure you still have the road front, which I have one piece of.
Yeah, that was kind of, I submitted some questions to, to the county, to Robert, but I haven't got a response yet back, so I don't know if this is the place where I'd get it. My biggest thing with the, the creating the new lot using lot five and creating lot one thirteen is because of the odd shape of this property, what is the rear line, reserve, rear setback? What is the, you know, that's, that's kinda.
Truthfully, you should be talking to township zoning officer. Robert, yeah, Rob might give you some, he might suggest some things from county, but he really doesn't have a say, so you have a zoning officer. The zoning officer's gonna give you the final one. I'm sure Rob will say, well, I'd probably look at it this way, look at it this way, and he'll probably give himself the out with, with the zoning officer makes the final decision. So I, I would probably get in touch with the zoning officer. We do have, I don't know if.
Maybe all of my questions will be answered by the zoning officer then, because.
And did you see the zoning officer's comments?
Yeah, they, they were, they were.
They're pretty vain, they're pretty plain. But he does say, if you grant this lot six, it's gonna have a bunch of zoning ordinance violations. We understand, your lot's like twenty-five, twenty feet at points. You can't have a front or a side or a rear set, I mean, those sections are non-buildable, we get that.
Well, it's because of, you know, a lot, you know, the, the major comment, well, the major comment was, it sounds like you probably shouldn't do lot six at this point.
Probably not.
Which leaves lot one thirteen A, is what we're calling it on the plaque. And then all the, the other comments that are my biggest concerns, how, how to show the, the side rear setbacks.
I'm gonna chill, especially on that, that part, because they're gonna overlap.
Well, in that part, on that triangular part, the triangular part.
You're talking to, uh.
Yeah, that's where, that's where the, eventually, that's where the buildable lots would fit.
Right. I mean, I know, I would view it, I would view, I would view it almost like a triangular piece and making, imagining like that tail doesn't exist. And I would say front setback along water. And then I think in the definitions, they talk about a lot with just three sides. And I think we have to do is one front, one side, one rear. And you could probably decide which one you want to be the side and rear. But again, I'm not the zoning officer and I don't.
Then they go away next year at some point, so then we create new, a new lot and new setback.
Yeah, but I, I don't wanna say something to zoning officer and they disagree.
Okay, okay. Can I just give a brief history of how this happened? I had an interest in some lots across the street, some of the old chariot lots. And it made more sense for Dustin and Ashley to own those. But I said, you know, hey, this makes more sense for me to own this side of the road. And so it actually, even though it seems convoluted, this is actually a better idea than what they had because they had this piece that was created by, long before I think any of us were born. And I'm trying to assemble a large enough piece that is, that, that neither of these lots, it's gonna be one lot in the end. That's what we wanna create, is one lot in the end. And if I could get some more land, that'd be wonderful to create one more lot. But, you know, I'm gonna be talking to a few people to try to figure that out. But it isn't ever resubdivide or anything else. It's to create a nice piece of ground right there. And sometimes old boundary lines meet up against new regulations. And the problem is, is exactly the clean and green issue, that's why we're doing this. Because Dustin owns over fifty acres there. And I'll roll back on the whole thing. Instead, I'll have to pay rollback on the each of these lots, but you can divide it to one point five per year.
I thought you could take, you could take out two acres pretty good, can you?
It's one point five.
So the two?
Yeah.
It's two or, of the two.
Two or ten percent, I think.
Really? Yeah, well, sorry about that. Um, but, um.
That's all we had to do with this, like, this. Yeah, if you got to move the whole thing, it would've been like three, you know, three point four or something like that.
Yeah.
I also wanna mention that the county also was against having this done with the flooding, uncompleted lot, not just.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, district, I mean, our intention is to record the next lot in January. So, you know, record one this year.
I'm not sure exactly how it goes, if it's the recording phase. I mean, we get through this one, you could almost, we're, we're at the point at the time of year, you could almost put it in and just say, yeah, just hold it until January first, you know, but get through.
Well, we got, we got a free.
We do one this year, one next year.
And I, I see people do that totally. Record one in January and boom, I mean, December, they go right in in January.
Yeah, that's what my, my desire would be is to just get one, record one in December thirty-first, do it on January first and get it done. I mean, you know, there's no interest in, other than not owing, I think it was something like seventy-six thousand rollback, that, and that seems a little bit painful then.
Especially for that lot.
Yeah, that lot, it, yeah.
That might be one of the unique blocks in all of Adams County.
Yeah.
It's the most unique plan I've seen, you know.
Yeah, and so we were trying to figure out how to do this and remember that. Yeah, and I was like, wow. It's certainly not gonna try to build a fence around it.
I guess what we're saying is we're gonna have to go forward to the comments, K P I.
Yeah, I, I take care of everything except the setbacks. I pulled lot six out of it, we've done all the areas, so. Cause I had to take a lot, what lot six was and had to intermake or change it all again early next year, later this year.
Hopefully we can get it done this year.
Yeah.
Cause I don't know.
I'll, I'll have it ready to submit. I just gotta, I just gotta get confirmation on setbacks really, other than that.
And you know, you know the, you know the zoning officer?
I have the comments from the zoning officer, so I will, I'll reach out to them, yeah. Yeah.
His main office is actually in Jamesburg, but they have a small office here in the county, just the other side of fifteen or thirty. And he, there'll be people there and sometimes not here, so.
Yeah, it's pretty basic, should be pretty simple response, if I quickly go through a phone call or email or something. But if I have to give email, I'll, I'll go to email.
Okay, anybody else have questions or comments? Boys are just sitting up there just bright and shiny in those chairs. He's a newbie, walked in like this, this is, I don't know where the chairs. Anyway. Okay, so, uh, we gotta be to table this. Oh, we do?
I mean, they're, they're not running out of time, right, but you would not to table.
Okay, so, um, I moved that we table, we would have the subdivision plan until changes can be resubmitted. Those are seconded over there, here, all right, up there, uh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You have one or a few more chairs? I, I got a bunch of curvy little water auction. I'll be happy to bring them up.
Talk to Wendy.
I will. I'm not, I said that, I was thinking about earlier and then I said, I better not say that, it looks like a bride. Couple of office chairs.
Was she at the auction? Maybe she got a piece of the auction.
No, she wasn't there, but I had a lot, I just wanted, but I needed two, I got twenty-five.
We're missing two people, so I don't even think we could fit two more chairs then. Thank you. All right, good night. I know this is that the lighting changed at the end of our meetings, but it's getting dark. All right, um, considering I don't have any other business to bring up?
I did have, like, you had the, all these documents, um, is that Liberty Estates that part?
Yeah.
But we didn't get any.
Wendy said they're online and she put out a note saying that she was not gonna have copies here because it was, there's just too many covers.
Okay, I don't remember the, any of the.
Oh, it's, well, I can't do the online things.
No, I can. I, I, I got the attachments, but I don't remember them, I think, but I'll look, maybe.
But I'll look, maybe I don't, I can see anything other than, uh, it wasn't drawn.
It's, the only really drawings is like the one he showed us here. Um, I mean, oh, I don't think we did anything. Uh, I, I don't know, I got the hard copy, so it wasn't great enough.
But, um, I, it's kinda confusing because there's all these, um, components.
Right, it's something you guys typically don't deal with.
They are.
Um, cause it's, it's all, it's, it's all based on sewage right now. And it's not the plan for lots and it's all, we wanna build a treatment plant, do we meet all this criteria? And in our opinion, that's what we said in the letter and I think Mike agreed, um, there was just an incomplete package. There's things that they have to do to hit the flat packages complete.
Do you think it would be good for us to have a copy of the agreement? Because none of us were on planning commission then.
No, none of you is there.
You probably haven't been living here.
It's wrong to be that.
Yeah, Rich, I don't know, when did you, were you here when the...
No, no, I didn't move here till, actually about the same time I got it.
Oh, really?
Maybe you're...
Okay. I mean, I don't, I wasn't involved, um, when I got to the court.
Yeah, I...
When I know it was a big decision.
Well, whatever, it's presumably sewage treatment, right? And the requirements, they're not governed by that agreement because the deep, the states can affect them.
That's something that, yeah, I mean...
I mean, the water quality, it comes out of the department and all that.
Right, that's true.
Yeah, they're not gonna need whatever.
There was a, there is a board agreement about this subdivision plan.
Well, I'm gonna help Wendy to get us a copy of that though. It's not gonna be public, it's gonna be water for that to go.
Well, it's still deemed public water because you're, once you serve over two people, you're, it's public water.
Really?
Like, uh, what you wanna call it, an RV, you know, campers? That's public water because there's more than one home. Even though it's their individual private, it's still public. Um, so, yeah, even though they're gonna maintain it and all, it would be deemed a public water system. And a public sewer system. Um, that's, yeah, even though you're not gonna call it, it's still deemed public.
So, I would like to request from the township a copy of the board agreement, um, for the next one, you know, review. Thank you.
On the board?
The board agreement?
On the board agreement?
Mm-hmm.
What was the suit vote?
Well, they...
This whole thing. They just... Like, well, like he said, when they originally came in, it was...
Thirteen hundred and seventy-eight houses, a clubhouse.
It was, it was a...
It was a big deal.
And, and it was, and the town, the township was involved and then, as he said, the intervenors, which would be the...
Adjacent property owners.
Adjacent, right, property owners who do have a legal right to, to say anything. Cause, you know, um, this would change how zoning was and everything. And so, the intervenors had their own attorney, the township had their own attorney. Obviously, they did and went to the courts and ultimately, an agreement was finalized and approved.
Is that what he keeps stating, the agreement?
Yeah.
Yep, so, and in that agreement, ultimately, it was down to, not only down to whatever, six hundred, whatever, plus or minus slots, there was also, I think, a plan that was associated that basically would mock what he showed us that shows where the slots and all and road systems, et cetera. Um, yeah. So...
So, you were here.
I, when I first started working at KPI, um... They were already here, but I don't think the agreement was signed yet. I was here before Mike was part of it. Um...
He said he came on then.
Ah, yeah, and, right, and I started in 'oh two, or 'oh three, 'oh two. So, I was a little bit before that, but I was still green behind ears, I wasn't like what I am now. I was sitting in the back just going, uh, taking notes, you know? But, you know, when this started, obviously, well, you all said, you weren't here on the board, I don't think Bob was on the board.
No, my husband was, or, or was, I was on something here.
And I, yeah, and I'm, I know we have three new...
But Bob's an intervener.
Yeah, right. And we also have three new supervisors from when this first started. And unfortunately, I think the old supervisors, they don't like it. I know Peter is.
Peter is, no.
I know, um, yeah, yeah. So, it's, we, again, it's been going on for twenty plus years.
Okay, so, what I'm asking for is a copy of the board settlement agreement. I didn't have the word settlement, no. Anyway, it was interesting.
With one, one thing, I was thinking, I looked up in, um, Flat Run is a warm water fishery and I don't know what the restrictions are as far as sewage plant dumping into there and the volume of water.
That's, that's really opened my head. If you notice, I know I'm on the letter, but really, Craig Zapp from my office, he did your Act Five Thirty-seven plan twenty years ago. You did an Act Five Thirty-seven, five thirty plan, basically because of this, uh, development. Craig did it in our office, he did it for the township and all, he worked on it. So, when all this came in, like, even though yous don't know who Craig was and never met him, I went, it's all just Craig. It's, so, when you have questions like that, I really can't answer them. You wanna email them to me, go ahead, I can forward on to Craig and, and he can respond to you. But it's just, it's, it's opened my head, I don't, I do septic systems, I do sand mounds. He does wastewater treatment facilities. So, we do.
Okay, well, those other businesses are motion to adjourn?
I've heard a motion to adjourn, I'll second it.
Okay, okay.
Hey, I'm not saying loud, no?
I heard that. She's sending two all over the ground on that chair.
Well, I don't hear well, I'm just sitting here and there's something, there's noise from a fan or something.
Yeah, it's a fan, it's noise, yeah.
Yeah, it's affecting my other hearing.
Doesn't matter to you.
Okay, on favor?
Uh-uh.
Okay, we adjourn at eight, uh, twenty-three.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Do I have to carry all the videos again? How much do you think this is gonna change, uh, this pad?
I'm sorry.
All this stuff, time?
Uh, the rule of thumb, all I'm gonna tell you is the rule of thumb in my office for plans, uh, we only need two revisions.
Okay.
So, if something has an eight revision...